I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's nice to, while you all met face to face a couple of weeks ago, it's nice for me to be back and seeing everybody up, well, not up close, but personally. I appreciate the high school for hosting us tonight and allowing us to be in their space. Do we have any public audience for the record or anything tonight? I don't believe we do. Okay, so then moving on to Board and Administrative Communications, Mr. Tindall, since I can see you.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Jen?
I'm good.
Erin?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Tom?
What's up?
Tara?
I'm going to mention a town-wide event that we had, a ribbon cutting today down on Iron Horse Boulevard at the Performing Arts Center. We have, the 350th has struggled this year because it's, we can't have any events, so...
Due to COVID.
Yeah, so we pivoted a bit this summer and we have created this, banners, and they are on the fence at the meadows and they are depicting the 350 years of history of Simsbury. Just tidbits, there's a lot more to learn and there's a lot more to investigate. We're hoping to tickle people's ideas and thoughts to do more investigation and see what Simsbury is really about.
Yes, I was reading about it today, the 30, they're going to do the 35 steps.
And there are 35, there's Simsbury 350th Hunt for History and there'll be 300, there'll be 35 stops across the town and you can go online to the website and if you find them all, take pictures of yourself at the sites, then you'll put, get loaded in for a prize.
A great way to learn about this lovely place we call home.
And it's for everybody, all ages and families, and it's just something that we can actually do. So it was exciting today to finally get, get it up and cut it, cut and opened up for everybody.
Yes, so walk along Iron Horse and look at your banners.
That's a great idea.
Yes.
Yeah, just briefly, the Crex School started today, so they're full, up and running, and so far, so good. We haven't heard anything of it in the contrariary. And then next week will be our full board Crex Council meeting, so we will have the first meeting for the first time since, since June. And Kate, and we've been meeting every week, there's been a lot of webinars and a lot of programs that I encourage if you'd like to, you know, get on the website and to hear some things. And the next virtual workshops will be the legal issues. So it'll be taking place in September and October and it's going to be very interesting about some legal issues that are going to be happening now, especially through COVID. And on the national front with NSBA, we've been pushing a lot of federal and policies on campus, on the Hill, working with legislators, now that Congress, well, now they're all back from their summer, summer retreat. And there is a safety summit that if you're interested in attending will be on September 16th and it's going to be a national summit that will have some speakers and presenters from around the country. So it'll be very interesting for, for school districts to, to tune in.
Great. Mr. Watson?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay. We have a new student rep and we normally would have a great introduction and I don't know if anybody can fill us in or if you want to introduce yourself, but we would love to meet our student rep.
Hello, I'm Catherine Renau, I'm a senior and I'm excited to be here.
Welcome.
And I'm also a senior and I'm very excited to be here and learn how this all works.
Well, thank you for coming and being with us tonight. We're happy to have you and look forward to seeing what's behind your masks someday.
Sue, maybe we should put their faces in bio unless, it's actually on our website or something.
Yes, that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
All right, moving on, Mrs. Lampke, because you're right in front of me.
You'll hear more from me later.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I'm just going to jump here so the microphone picks me up. If there's one thing we can count on with COVID, it's that things change from week to week. And we, earlier this summer, we knew based on the State Department of Ed guidance that each district had to form a mask policy. Earlier in the summer, we were told that that did not have to be a Board of Ed approved policy, that it was just supposed to be a set of protocols and rules that a district made. We have been advised the other way, that the Board of Ed does need to adopt a formal Board of Ed level mask policy. So I will be virtually convening the policy committee in the next few days, sending some language that came from our law firm that we can review, kind of put our Simsbury touch on it. And then this would be another one that we're going to want to fast-track, if we can do it for our next meeting in a couple of weeks, we'll have it for that. But if not, I think the latest we should approve it by is early October.
So can you just review the fast-track process with us real quick?
So it takes your, as the chair, that you have to waive the part of the bylaws that says we need to read the policy two times before it can be approved.
Okay.
And there is a section in the bylaws that allows you as the chair to bypass the multiple readings.
Okay, so we could, so if you could get that, if policy is good with it, you get it to us, we could do one reading and vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Curtis?
All right, so just two, two quick things. First and foremost, want to give a shout out to our staff and our students because we're going to have an opportunity at our back-to-school report to talk about the first two weeks, the initial week being with, with teachers and then obviously students transitioning in. But just very proud of how our staff supported each other, supported our students in their transition back to school in an environment that looks and feels very different than what we left back in March. So that was, that was one piece, I wanted to take a moment and say that. The other piece is Amy and I had a very productive meeting with Jeff from Tech Don. We wanted to follow up on the Board of Finance presentation around the facilities master plan. And we've asked Jeff to kind of support us in the short term here to define the necessary steps should, should a project go to referendum this year and really kind of define what those pieces of the puzzle would be, which will be very helpful. The other piece is he's going to organize a meeting for myself, Jason, and Amy to attend at the State Department to share with the State Department what our long-term facilities plan is, just so they get familiar with the concepts, we can get any input and feedback from them. So when it is ready to move this forward, we know that the chances of it being successful are a little bit better. So really productive conversation as that work continues to move forward.
That's great. Jeff has been a great partner to us through all of this, so we appreciate that. And I just would like to echo my thanks and appreciation to everybody who has worked so hard this summer and who made the opening so successful. I've heard good things all the way around from anybody who has stopped to talk to me. So I am absolutely beyond appreciative of all the hard work from Neil to Erin to Betsy, Sue, Matt, all of you worked so hard this summer. And I just wanted to publicly one more time say thank you to all of you for everything you did, for the kids and the teachers and the buildings and all the hard work. And to our teachers for, and paras and nurses and everybody for welcoming those kids back last week. Well done and thank you all. So with that, we are on to approval of the minutes of the August 20th special meeting. Can I make a motion?
Make a motion, will you make, will you approve the minutes of the August 20 meeting?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I abstain. Personnel, Mr. Sullivan?
So we start with a couple of resignations that came in recently. First is Cassidy Considine, who had been a first grade teacher at Central School, was going to teach grade four this year and decided to leave her position. We were able to fill it before the school year started, but we wish Cassidy well with her next endeavor. And then also Jason Stammen, who is our choral director at Henry James. Jason is relocating to the southern part of the state for personal reasons, so he has been on a job search and just landed a choral directing position in Milford. So we're happy that Jason gets to make the move he's been looking to make, but very sad to see him go. He's been involved in our music programs. This, he's been a teacher for four years, but he's been involved for over a decade with our shows and as a private voice coach and really special member of our community and we will miss him very much. So if someone could make the motion that is there?
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Cassidy Considine effective April, August 21st, 2020, and Jason Stammen effective September 30th, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we also have a retirement add to the list if you didn't, Katie, did this went in their packet or did it go? It's at your place tonight. We have recently received the retirement of one of our administrators, Johncia Latwinick, who is our Director of Instructional Technology. We would not have gotten all of this distance learning and everything else off the ground without Jason Casey and Johncia's partnership to make all of that happen. It's been incredible. Johncia has been planning her retirement, but knew that she needed to stick through to get us started this year with the, with the huge task that it was to, to lift and get school open. You know, I've worked with Johncia for a long time. She is incredibly dedicated, incredibly smart. This is a well-deserved retirement because she has really worked herself tirelessly for what is 26 years at Simsbury and, and most of that time that I've been here in instructional technology. So the official date of her retirement is November 1st and we congratulate Johncia and ask you to accept this notice of her retirement.
So we can't say no. That is, that's a tough one, so could we get a motion, please?
Yeah, that's one with regret, making the motion to accept the retirement of Johncia Latwinick, but well deserved.
Yeah.
And a second, please?
Second.
And Johncia, we don't know what we'll do without you. I hope someone steps up and does, takes over robotics for her and keeps those kids going forward because that's a fabulous program she's been so involved in.
Don't get any hate here.
Yeah.
Ah, there you go. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Johncia, well deserved.
Susan, I would just add, you know, Johncia brought this incredible experience from the private sector into our schools and as Neil, Neil did a great job describing her impact, but nobody works harder. I mean, her work ethic and commitment is just admirable to watch over the years and I've really enjoyed my partnership with her as superintendent and also when I was a principal in this district. So as everybody said, she's had a wonderful impact, will be hard to replace, but an incredibly important position, obviously, for us to start thinking about and, and moving on.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, appointments then, Mr. Sullivan?
So this is now our normal slideshow to show you what we've been up to for the past five or six months, hiring staff to start the school year in, in Simsbury. And the list grew quite rapidly at the end as we made our moves, but this started with something I never thought I would do, which is hiring people virtually. And then by the time I had done it half a dozen times, I forgot that I used to do it differently. But it was certainly a robust hiring season and we're proud to offer the class of 2020. I'll start by noting that we start with Simsbury High School and of course, earlier in the summer, we had the chance to introduce you to our new Assistant Principal Vanessa Messiah, so I just would make that mention as we look at the rest of the high school new staff. And Vanessa did come to one day of new teacher orientation as we oriented her to Simsbury as well. Jim Compton is our first new teacher for this year, but he's not new, many of you will recognize him. This is a return to Simsbury. Jim did about his first decade as a teacher with us. We originally hired him as a chemistry teacher and then he's the one that really developed our Project Lead the Way engineering curriculum. He since has been in administrative positions in other places, including a stint as a department supervisor in Farmington. And then with the opportunity to come back to Simsbury, Jim's actually going to be involved with Project Lead the Way and our architecture program. So we welcome Jim back, very happy to have him. Another Jim, Jim Hockdorfer in our math department. Opportunity to have Jim teach Mr. Patrina and I Algebra II remotely and we succeeded, so we thought he was pretty good. And he comes to us with experience from both Hartford and Wyndham and really brought great energy to the interview process and we're pleased to welcome Jim to our math department. Brianna Loyat was a hire that is actually a split with Simsbury High School and Henry James. This is a position that does two classes at the middle school and then three here. And Bree was returning to the area after some time that her husband's occupation took them to California and was back in the Connecticut area and looking for employment and we were very lucky to find her for our art department position. Really excited about John Murphy, who is making a career change. He student taught with us in the spring, that quickly turned to virtual student teaching, but it was very well done as he worked with Deb Manning. He's got a very interesting background as both a veteran of the Coast Guard and almost two decades in the business world. So this was an alternate route to certification, method of student teaching and then we, with the opportunity to bring him into the department, transitioned him right in. So really excited to have John with us. As you remember, Colleen Thompson, our choral director, accepted an administrative position. Rebecca Salzman comes to us from New Jersey, Ramsey, New Jersey, very similar, high-performing high school where the, the reference checks that we did on her lets us know that our choral program is going to be in great shape still because it was really special to talk to the people down there and hear about what she's going to bring to the table. At Henry James, we had a few new hires. Christina Gunlock is actually a one-year teacher, filling in for a leave of absence. She had previously taught in Simsbury at the Master School and is currently in Terryville. And actually, this was a late in the summer hire, so Terryville held on to her for a few weeks as was their right. So Christina actually starts with us at Henry James next Monday, so we're pleased to have Christina. Andrew Kohansky will be our band director at Henry James, a lot of changes in the music department at Henry James. UConn graduate and was down in the Stonington area, also doing middle school, is a, when I was interviewing him, I think he told me every member of his family is involved as a music educator in some way, so it, it comes in his genes. Patrick Long, our new math department supervisor at Henry James, comes to us from the Cheshire Public Schools. Interesting experience teaching sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so I think he's going to be a real resource for us as we talk about what that sixth grade transition might, might look like. And had, just was very, very impressive as we interviewed for instructional leader for our math department. Jake Tarbox, we added a PE position late in the summer to make the scheduling work. Jake comes to us from the Parish, Parish Hill Middle and High School and as, we've had very good luck hiring PE teachers from Springfield College, they produce great teachers and we're proud to welcome Jake. At Central School, Justin Farrell will be the music teacher this year. Last year had an opportunity to teach in the Berlin Public Schools. We of course know Justin, starred on this very stage many times as a Simsbury High School graduate, so welcome. I would also note that as I interviewed Justin, he, his grandfather was both a music teacher and an administrator here for years, Walter Dunn, and so we, again, it's in the family with Justin. Kelsey Marconis, we actually hired at first as a long-term substitute and then when a full-time vacancy opened in grade four, Beth Hennessy moved her over into the full-time vacancy that, that we had. And she, this is her first contracted teaching job after student teaching last year and she brings great energy, happy to have her at Central School. Our first hire of this season was Elizabeth Penzino, who is a transfer to the Hartford area from Boston, moved here for personal reasons. I'll say she moved here to get married and then she was a COVID victim for her wedding, so we kind of felt bad about that, but it's still going to happen. But it got, it got Liz to our area here in Simsbury. Last teaching was in Brookline and she's going to be a special ed teacher at Central I think we switched to Latimer Lane here, yes, we did here. So Erica Morosky taught, I'm sorry, was a MIP tutor for us last year, math intervention tutor, and they, really pleased with her work. She was at Squadron Line in that role as a MIP tutor and the opportunity to bring her into a fourth grade position made itself available and, and we keep an eye on this one of Erica Morosky because we're going to come back to a theme here in a second. Kennedy Quirk from Endicott College, who last year had a teaching assistant job in West Hartford. This is her first contracted job. We hired a couple of, you're going to see a few kindergarten teachers. This was a late in the summer hire and we filled a number of vacancies in just a few days and we did great. I was worried about it, but the, the quality of candidates that we were able to bring in and quickly fills, Kennedy being one of those. Earlier in the summer, we had hired Heather Riera, who is a more experienced teacher, previous experience as you can see in Weathersfield, Farmington, and Winchester. Last year, as she re-entered the profession after raising children, she worked for us as a kindergarten tutor at Tooten Hill School, so she came highly recommended from Maggie Seidel. Jennifer Sams is another one of my students here at Simsbury High School, who I'm very proud to have hired. Jenny will be a grade one teacher at Latimer Lane. Student taught in West Hartford, was also a MIP tutor for us last year and it was only a matter of time before we brought Jenny into the fold. And our, our other kindergarten teacher that we hired late in the summer is Bree Simonetti and brought her in for a, this was one of our people we were able to bring in for an in-person lesson, given where we were in the summer. And again, her first contracted job after student teaching and we're excited to get her into the kindergarten classroom. At Squadron Line School, one PE position, Ryan Martin had previously been a long-term sub with us and had also worked in our popular summer school program, so we were familiar with Ryan. Had not had an opening for a little while, he went to do some teaching at Catholic schools in West Hartford and this opportunity to bring him back availed itself and, and Ryan is back with us and we're excited about it. Abby Ritson is our third, the theme of SHS graduates, here's our third. Abby has also worked for us as both a substitute teacher and a paraprofessional in our summer programs. I will, I would say, again, this was one that we had seen her work in ESY and other settings and this one was probably a matter of time too and we're pleased to welcome Abby to Squadron Line, where she attended as an elementary school student. And I think this is the last one, Tooten Hill School. We have, I think, we skipped one quickly there. Ashley McLaren, Ashley was actually hired by the Squadron Line administrative team and then the shuffle that happened as we moved to distance learning caused us to transfer Ashley to grade three at Tooten. Very experienced teacher from the Waterberry Public Schools and an excellent hire and demonstrated great flexibility in needing to be moved to a different position just a few weeks before the school year started. Here's our theme that you saw, Erica Morosky, here's her twin sister Alexa, who also worked for us as a MIP tutor last year. UConn graduate and these two blew everybody away as MIP tutors last year and then the, the opportunity to offer them their contracts and they're going to get to collaborate because they might be in different schools, but they're both teaching fourth grade. So happy to bring Alexa in. And then our final new teacher this year, Amy Stupenski, also grade four. We were able to hire her after she had a teaching assistant role in the Granby Public Schools last year and as you can see, comes our way after studying down at the University of North Carolina. So a great crew. We were busy for sure to get all that hiring done. I want to thank Cindy Freelinger in my office, who helps onboard all of these people and does an incredible job. We still have two vacancies left. One is a family and consumer science position that's been somewhat difficult to fill with a limited number of applicants. And then as you could see, the position that Jason Stammen left, we are looking for a choral director at Henry James. So those should be the last certified hires that we bring in and happy to show you what we've been up to.
Okay, well, you definitely were busy. It's nice to see all those Simsbury kids coming back home too. Okay, so now we're moving on to the school opening report.
All right, great. So I will, I will kind of frame this a little bit. We put back up on the screen the four guiding beliefs as, as we did in the last meeting because we want to frame our updates and tie them to those beliefs. So what you're going to hear tonight is a little bit about where we are with the health and safety protocols with our staff and students as it related to those first couple of weeks. So we, we've selected various areas that Neil's going to report out on. He also has some pertinent enrollment information to share. Sue is going to step in and help out with Erin's piece tonight and talk about lessons learned and some of the highlights from the different instructional models. Obviously, we're juggling quite a few with in-person, hybrid, and the launch of the distance learning as well. We'll talk through that and focus on some technology pieces. In addition to that, Betsy will talk as she has kind of overseen and worked real hard to support our staff and communicate with our parents on the elementary distance learning model. She has a couple of slides in the stack on information that we wanted to share as well. And Sue will tie it out with some info on the social and emotional health in the professional development as well as access and equity, which ties into the technology piece as well. So we want to stay true to those four areas, kind of in a strategic sense, as we work through and continue to keep the public and the board informed on where we are. I had one other slide that I wanted to share tonight. We put this up at the last Board of Education meeting and this is the public health data that we now receive on a weekly basis. So the measure here, just to remind the board and folks that are listening, is it's a seven-day rolling average of new COVID cases per 100,000 individuals in terms of, in terms of population scope. So we get the data in terms of how it shakes out in the state of Connecticut, Hartford County, and then in the Farmington Valley consortium towns. So we're still in really good shape. You can see a slight uptake in, in Farmington Valley of point two, but how this data marker measures to what the Department of Public Health told us is they tie it to the various instructional models. So in the yellow there on the far left is data that if it is under 10 cases per 100,000, it supports in-school instruction to the maximum extent that, that's possible. If it goes over that 10, it goes to that middle category of hybrid and then escalates up if, if we saw some significant spikes into potentially having to be all distance. So a reinforcement that we're fortunate in Connecticut and particularly here in the Farmington Valley, that we're still in good shape to be moving forward with what our plan is, which was an opening, a hybrid model and transitioning back in. Neil will go over that schedule again, just to refamiliarize people with it today, but thought this was important data to put out in front of the board and share with the public and will plan to do so at each of our board meetings.
Great, thank you.
Neil, I'm going to move it to you for some of the enrollment information.
I'm just staying in the chair, I don't know what I'm doing here. So I wanted to start with where we are in terms of enrollment. I'll do a more extensive report after the official October 1 date for enrollment that the state requires, but you can see here, what I've provided for you is what each school's enrollment is. And I broke it down by, at each school, how many chose in-person learning versus distance learning. And so what you end up with is around, between 17 and 18% that are in the distance learning model. That is highest at the elementary level, which is almost precisely 20% of the students in distance learning at the elementary level and then less at the middle school and even less at, at high school. The overall number, 3952, is below our projections from Malone and McBroom by a little bit. Their projection thought we might be at 4,000. We have seen a little bit of a wave of late registrations that is atypical in Simsbury. So even last Thursday and Friday, our enrollment people getting in new registrations that were not even in process yet, and that's pretty unusual. So I do expect that number to go up a little bit as we get this settled for October 1st. And I just want to note on the slide, if you're looking at it, I can do simple arithmetic. So in-person and distance will not always meet the total, because the total includes outplaced students. So the math might not look like it works, but it works. On this slide, you can see by grade level where the distance learning students came. So 403 at the elementary level. Right now, that is smallest at the kindergarten level, and then the upper grades of grades 5 and 6, where what we have right now is two teachers at each of those grade levels. And you can see in grades 1 through 4, a larger population. And right now, we are actually getting even larger than 73 at grade 1, so are likely to be adding a teacher in the next week or so to the grade 1 cohort of distance learning, because that's getting pretty much above our class size guidelines. So that is where we are. Betsy's going to talk a little more about our distance learning program at the elementary level. So in transitioning to the four themes that Matt highlighted, my part is the health and safety of students and staff. If you watched my highly rated safety videos that were sent out to the community, these were the mitigation strategies that I talked about in those. That was before we got anybody in the door, and I do want to report out how it's gone. I mean, certainly, I think people appreciate, you know, we're still in the hybrid model, so these classrooms can have a very small number of students in them on certain days. When we've got these classes at the elementary level, many of them down to 13 or 14 students, and you're only bringing half of them, it clearly feels very socially distanced, and people have commented a lot about that at certainly the elementary level, but also the middle and high school level. So I think the classrooms, people felt very good about what we were able to do, certainly while we're in this hybrid model. But I think when you see all the desks in the room and see how spaced they are, when even everybody will be here, people recognize that it was an excellent effort to create good social distancing in the classrooms. In the public spaces, today was the first day we did lunch at Henry James and the Middle School, which was, you know, kind of taping off cafeteria seats so that kids can't sit right next to each other. We have avoided our larger spaces like this, have not really done assembly-style introductions. And when we did, we had some orientation exercises with the 7th graders and the 9th graders, and you take 50 kids and you spread them out in here, and, you know, so our public spaces, we're paying attention to as well. Masks and face coverings. I think the biggest takeaway for adults is that kids have been compliant wearing the masks. This has not been a fight with students of any age. The youngest students can wear the mask, they're showing the resilience to wear the mask. The high school students are not putting up any fights to wear the mask, and it's been a comment at every single level that that was something people were worried about, and they're not seeing it in our first week of school. So that's been a very, it's made people feel good. We have had good enough weather that, you know, the vast, vast majority of our mask breaks have been outside. People bring their class outside, take a mask break, or we have 10 minutes of passing at the secondary level where kids can get away from other people and take a mask break. We did have one rainy day where they, Wednesday, I think, last week, where people needed to do indoor mask breaks and figured out how to spread people around, so that what you're looking for is to get six feet of distance between kids before you take a mask break, and keep them brief. Hand hygiene, as we've talked about all summer. We have the sinks at the elementary level. I will note, we are, there are a few classrooms at Terriffle School where we had to bring portable sinks in. They just arrived at the end of last week, and there was some assembly required, so they're getting in place with those portable sinks. But again, the hand sanitizer that we bought, I think we bought a dozen 55-gallon drums. We have hand sanitizer. So, and especially at the elementary level, teachers are teaching into the skills. You know, they felt very good about having that limited number of students, and let's talk about how we're going to sanitize our hands and wash our hands. And then certainly with cleaning and disinfecting, as I think I noted, we were in the process of posting for new custodians at our last meeting. We have now hired three additional custodians spread to the district, so that's 120 extra hours of manpower that we can put into cleaning. And our equipment of the disinfecting electrostatic sprayers has arrived. So that's in use, and the custodians were trained. The rep from the company was out last week in training our custodians how to use the new disinfecting machines. So I'm really happy with the, you know, the planning is one thing, and then you have to see it executed, and we were quite pleased. The other, what I call operational adjustments, is just, and this is where our principles really shined. I put the structure out there of things you would need to think differently about, and then we spent our administrative meeting times really hashing out how to do these different things. Our drop-off and dismissal procedures, the elementary principals especially have said they, right now, it's gone extremely smoothly. On the left there, you should see the operation at Squadron Line for pickup. That's a couple of our specials teachers with a bullhorn, and you get called to what space you're going to come out to. And at a big elementary school, they found a way to get cars in and kids into their cars safely and get them moving. So we still are experiencing some traffic. Henry James had the most traffic congestion, tried some new things today. I need to get a report from Scott Baker and Angel at Belmonte about how it went, but that has proven to be our greatest challenge, is the Henry James drop-off and dismissal. So we'll keep partnering with the police and the administration at Henry James to get that right. Recession lunch. At the elementary school, lunch is served in the classrooms, as I said earlier. Today was the first day of lunch at Henry James and Simsbury High School. Definitely, the feedback I got at the high school was a need to probably balance the lunches a little better. They had far more students in one lunch than they did in the other, and they've got to tweak that a little bit. But they were generally pleased with the students as they went through the lines. I'll talk a little bit more about social distancing when I focus on the middle and high school. Certainly, a lot of procedures that Sue Lemke helped orchestrate with the nurses' office and what were required isolation rooms, in case a student or staff member is sick at school and needs to be isolated. A lot of procedures around air purifiers and other protocols that our nurses had some extensive training during that week that we only had adults here about the protocols. In a couple of slides, I'm going to show you a little bit about what our health protocols are. Hallway traffic, a lot of markings about trying to keep kids in that socially-distanced manner. Here at the high school, if you go into the academic core, you will see that during passing time, the first and third floor go one way, and the second floor goes the other way, clockwise and counterclockwise. So they are trying to be really thoughtful about not having kids crossing paths. That's just during the portions of the day where it is passing time. If you're just, if it's during class and you need to go to the bathroom and there's not anybody in the hallways, you don't have to walk all the way around the school, but it's really meant for a passing time thing. Speaking of bathrooms, we have determined an appropriate capacity for each bathroom, and have signs on the door asking students to be sure that they aren't creating congregation in our bathrooms, and the extra manpower of our custodians is, much of it is around extra cleaning of bathrooms. You've probably seen some of the plexiglass barriers that we have around high-traffic areas. In addition, at the elementary school, at all levels, they're using them most at the elementary school, we have these sort of plastic barrier shields that anytime a kid is having lunch or snack, they put them on their desk because the mask comes off, so they have a shield in front of them. It's their own shield, they don't share it with anybody. It folds up, it goes in their desk. So it's, you know, that barrier strategy is in place. And then we've made excellent use of outdoor spaces. You've seen our tents here at Simsbury High School, that was largely a lunch consideration. But each elementary school has identified places where instruction can appropriately happen in outdoors, and teachers are taking advantage of it. At the elementary level, certainly a major strategy of cohorting, where these students in, with their teacher, it's very limited movement throughout the day. And as a result, we were able to create very favorable in-class averages of size, as you can see here. When I figured it out, it may have changed a little bit, but on the day that I figured it out, it was 15.4 as an average class size at the elementary level. That's pretty ideal for being able to space students apart. I can tell you the tremendous feedback we got from parents, from faculty, about the way we started with the half-days and the smaller cohorts. It created an incredible sense of calm and manageability for people. They truly appreciated it as a way to, you know, enter into a brave new world of what schools were going to look like. And it was, in retrospect, even more important than I thought it was going to be to open that way, because we really did get fabulous feedback. I did want to note for the elementary level, we changed the way specials have worked for many years. Our specials are obviously art, music, and physical education, and you would have, each, every day, you would go to a different special. So you'd do art on Monday, music on Tuesday, and PE on Wednesday, and then the cycle would repeat itself. So instead of moving those students through, so within three days, the art and music teacher saw every kid in the school, really. What we've done instead is, you're now going to take your special for about 30 days at a time. So you're going to have music for 30 days, instead of switching it every day. And in 30 days, then we'll switch you to art. And we've really reduced the number of exposures that are happening for any one particular teacher. We definitely have to monitor the operational adjustments that I spoke of on the last slide as we do increase the populations. Our targeted dates of next Monday, the 14th, and then Tuesday, the 29th, after Yan Kapoor, you know, there's going to be larger population, so drop-off and lunch and all of that, we just have to continue to monitor. And when, Betsy will talk about distance learning, but I showed you the cohort sizes. At the end of summer, more people moved into distance learning than we probably expected. So we know we need to add one teacher now. We're watching those numbers, and it is definitely a fluid situation, and we're going to have to be nimble in how we staff as that happens. At the secondary level, the strategy of the hybrid and the block schedule dramatically reduces what typically would happen. Typically, you think of a high school or middle school and kids just moving and mixing all day long, and I think that we have done as good a job as we can in limiting the type of movement that would happen in a typical secondary school. I will especially note that Henry James, the work that was done to keep the teams intact, when hopefully we move to full in-person learning at Henry James, that is going to really pay off to make sure that kids really don't cross paths with anybody who's not on their team while in the school setting. We had great, the Monday, a week ago Monday, 7th and 9th grade orientation days. You'll recall that typically, it's, by the first day of school, we've had a couple of orientations of our new students into these buildings. Knowing that those, these students had really not had that opportunity, it was important to bring those grades in, and only those grades in, and I will credit both administrations with excellent programming on those days for kids. We have tried to clear out when 210 hits until Columbus Day. There's certainly some sports that have been sanctioned by the CIAC happening in our backfields, but other than that, we have asked our club advisors, like, we're going to see where we are after Columbus Day before we have a whole lot of after-school activities. It's allowing our custodians to get used to their new routines, and, you know, I think there will be clubs that will continue to meet virtually, but not in person until we give it the green light. You'll see the notes, social distancing needs to be emphasized. This is something we found teenagers are not very good at. If you get them into the classroom and you sit them apart, they do great, they, but they're social, we're all social beings, and teenagers especially. You know, there's a lot of reminding that has to happen. You don't need to be so close to each other. You can hear each other from six feet away. Like, so the feedback from the beginning was, A+ on the masks, needs improvement on social distancing. So we are continuing to work on that skill at all levels, but especially at the secondary level. I spoke about the traffic challenges at Henry James, and as you will recall, our decisions about what happens next for the secondary level are happening at the end of the month, and that timeline will be up in one second. And then this is, under health and safety, what are our protocols? We continue to emphasize daily screenings. Our nurses and the HR office, you know, we're fielding questions. If I had, if this was my situation, I was with this person over the weekend, you know, they now have a symptom. And it's all about close contact with people, you know. You don't have to quarantine yourself if you've had passing contact with somebody in an outdoor setting. Close contact is defined as 15 minutes, usually in an indoor setting. So, you know, so when they contact trace, that's what they're going to use. So we continue to work with people on understanding what they need to be looking out for, and emphasizing our daily screenings, and trying to understand what those protocols are. We are enforcing the quarantines. We did this with families and with employees. If you were in one of the states that the governor said you should quarantine, we enforced it. Some people weren't very happy with us, but we've enforced all of those quarantines. Our training for our nurses involve the protocols, and you can see, we talk about them in different tiers, from least serious to most serious. If somebody has symptoms but no exposure, what is the, if they have to stay home from school with symptoms, what's the re-entry process involving a clearance from a medical professional? Symptoms with an exposure is more likely to be a recommendation for testing. Exposure to a confirmed case is where we ask you to start a quarantine process. And then fortunately, no confirmed case in the school community at this point, but very specific protocols about what should happen. At the more serious levels, number 3 and 4 there, it involves a collaboration with the Farmington Valley Health District if anything were to happen. So that's a little bit about health protocols. And then my last slide is just to remind both the board and the community about our timelines, and to go, the health data that Superintendent Curtis showed you at the beginning of the presentation supports in-person learning, and our timeline is intact. Grades K through 2 will return next Monday, full for those grades, and we're confident in that plan. And then two weeks after that, on Tuesday, September 29th, grades 3 through 6. So our elementary schools will be fully backed by that date, assuming the metrics stay the same. And that's also the timeline in that last week of the month, where we would start to say, all right, what's the next safe step that we could make at the secondary level? So I'm going to stop with that, and I would start to say, all right, what's the next safe step that we could make at the secondary level? So I'm going to stop with that, and I think we're going to do questions before I leave and Sue comes up here. So any questions for this portion of the presentation?
Anybody have anything for Neil?
Jen, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, that was a long presentation, so I have a few questions.
Okay.
The parents, now those dates are set, so is there a set, just for everyone watching at home, is there a set date of if parents want to change, that they can or cannot?
So, right now, we are freezing, if you chose to come in person and are thinking about distance learning, we're not putting you immediately in right now. We're monitoring enrollment, saying you may need to wait a little while. It's really, we're targeting that September 14th date to potentially make any transitions. If it's an, if there's room in a great level, we have made some changes back the other way. We have had people who chose distance learning, changed their mind, there was plenty of room in the classroom, and we have said, come on back. But we are trying to sort of make windows, rather than just come and go whenever you, so, right now, our first window is going to be right at or near that September 14th date. The exception to that, I will note, is if you didn't have a choice, and you, I talked about the wave of kind of new registrations, one of the questions you get asked when you register new is, would you like in-person or distance learning? And you didn't have a choice in the summer because you weren't here yet. So those students, if they choose distance learning, have, because you have to offer that opportunity to everybody.
I want to, also, I just wanted to, because I have elementary kids as well, that soft opening, I cannot, at a personal level, but also everyone I've talked to, like, having that time, that mental, I think it's really a mental health break for both teachers and for students, I think was amazing. I think having that time where the kids could talk to the teacher more, get that connection started, in an environment that they haven't been in for six months or whatever it's been, how long, I think was amazing and great job to all. And then the other thing, two questions I had about enrollment, is kindergarten, are kindergarten numbers down because of all this, or is it way off?
Yes, they are definitely down. They're not down as much as I thought when I added up the distance learning, and they, so the cohort right now is about 250 students. That's a small kindergarten cohort, but it's not outrageously small. But I would definitely characterize the numbers as being down.
And then just as a process question, my last question was, do we find at the secondary level, are more kids walking or riding their bikes, and then do we have adequate spacing for bikes or whatever?
That's not a question I think I've asked. Let me ask the, yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering if that was.
Bus ridership is significantly low.
I heard it's very low, so that's why I was like, how are those all, is everyone driving?
That's a good follow-up for us, yeah.
Just a question, Neil, about the 15.4 average, if that was the number. How does that, that's smaller than what I expected, how does that compare to what our numbers have been in the past?
So a typical, a typical number at K through two, we try to staff our primary grades between 18 and 22 students under normal circumstances, and our 3 through 6 at 21 to 25 students. You'll recall that our strategy as we separated out into planning for COVID-19 return was to try to target a number of 18 to achieve social distancing. So we felt pretty good about the plan that we had. We were using every instructional space to capture it at like 18, and with more students going to distance learning than perhaps we anticipated, it emptied it out even a little more. So that's how we got to that level. But in terms of a typical number, I would describe a typical primary grade average as being between like 18 or 19 students, and a typical 3 through 6 being more like 21 students. But I'll have all that data for you on the October 1st report, compare year to year. But that's a pretty good ballpark.
It'll be interesting to see what happens in a few weeks, right, when we, when some people who are doing distance learning elect to potentially come back, and if, you know, we move forward like the plan says and have everybody in school at the elementary levels at the end of September. So, I mean, that's a good number, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Gives you a little flexibility.
Anybody else?
I have a question. Got back to this, the September 29th, are there parents and families who have vehemently, you know, not wanting to return their students to school for any of the, for any reasons, or they are going to be complying by that, to return to school?
I think we get both. I think we have people who think we're delaying this more than we should, and kids should be back in school, so that opinion is definitely out there. I even, as we talked in Jen's comments about the soft start, I've had people now in the past week say, oh, we kind of like the hybrid, we'd like to stay here. And that has never been an instructional model that we viewed as a long-term, it's, so, I think the opinions are varied, Lydia, they're, you know, but certainly in terms of what we think the most effective instructional model is, it's to get kids into school.
Absolutely.
But just to maybe clarify on that, because now you've got me thinking about it a little differently, Lyd. September 29th hits, anybody who has chosen distance learning is not being forced back to school, they remain in their distance learning classes.
No, no, they're going to stay in distance.
It is only the hybrid kids who will be back in class.
Correct.
Full-time.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. I just feel like, I wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to let this.
Do I have to take the clicker?
You do. Two slides, one for me. And then I'm going to click for Betsy.
Or is it, it's up here?
Yeah. Switch out nameplates and everything, Neil. Yeah, you can hold that one.
Okay, so we want to give you an update just from a teaching and learning standpoint regarding back to school. So Neil, this is your first click, and want to share with you that we want to talk a little bit about the technology, because certainly in the hybrid model for which we're opening in-person, technology is extremely important, and it's important to any model that we have to make sure that we have fluidity in between models should we need to access that. So in a previous meeting, Erin and I shared with you the technology that was going to be distributed to students. Our younger kiddos have the iPads in cases where our students in grades three through 12 have been distributed Chromebooks as well as those cases, and the teachers have a combination, whether that be Chromebooks, webcams, some desktop devices, microphones, and that distribution is well on its way, and you can see the particulars up there in that first bullet. But certainly wanted to share with the board some technology points to note. One of the first things, this was really led by Jason and his team around increasing the bandwidth capacity, because we knew that there was going to be an increase in the amount of usage, and therefore, we wanted to make sure that we had a bandwidth that could address any concerns that we had. So thank you for that, Jason. There were some noted glitches, breaks, pauses in technology, both in school and at home, and that really, the response to that was some daily problem-solving with our district tech team, again, led by both Jason and with John Sia, and our K-12 educators, to say, okay, these are the problems that we're facing, and how do we respond in the moment, whether that be through different settings, equipment, or classroom setups, so we can make sure that technology went as smooth as possible. We also had some later equipment arrivals, and we want to be transparent about that, and that impact to that distribution, but the tech is in the hands of the kids and getting in the hands of the teachers, which is so absolutely important. You know, there has been a lot of excitement by our educators through Just Fit, I'll call it Just Fit, and Just Right PD, because teachers, you know, even as administrators, we all have different skills and knowledge in using technology, some are better at it than others. So it's really important to be able to provide a spectrum of professional development that increases the, I call it the know-how of our end-users. So that's been very, very well-received among our educators, and certainly we're going to continue to monitor and make necessary adjustments as elements arise. But, you know, overall, happy with how things are going, and certainly our responsiveness to problem-solve any concerns.
Sue, just a quick question.
Please.
Grade two's missing from the device list. I'm just wondering, did they go Chromebooks or iPads?
Oh, it should be K-2.
Thank you.
iPads.
Okay.
Chromebooks start in grade three.
Okay.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
No, no, two.
Oh, two is Chromebooks, my apologies. We went one grade younger. Thank you. So next, Neil, is just around the extensive planning and preparation that has gone into the instruction, and certainly Neil's commented on it, Jen, you've commented on it, that well-received soft start, and how that focus has really been around the social-emotional needs of our staff as well as our students. Certainly, I'll talk more about that in just a little bit. But our teaching and learning subcommittees that have been meeting all throughout the summer, composed of teachers from around the district with different knowledge and expertise, coming together, looking at our curricular units of study, our standards to say, what is the most essential? Because we need to make room, and we need to make room for what's most important. Certainly, that focus on the social-emotional health in the first couple of weeks. I've already commented on the technology use and the professional development around that. But overall, teachers very appreciative of this time prior to student arrival, to collaborate, plan, and prepare, for all of these different needs that are new, and for these new normals. And that's really resulted in some teacher and student excitement regarding the first couple of days here with the Simsbury Public Schools. So I'm going to have Betsy comment about the elementary distance learning and give you some feedback there, and then I'll be back to talk more about social-emotional health, access, and equity.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, Betsy.
Good to see everyone again. So it has been an absolute joy to assume the responsibility of overseeing our distance learning program. As Neil mentioned, as of today, we have over, we have 403 students, elementary students, and 20 teachers. 18 of those teachers are in K-6 teaching positions, and two of those teachers are music teachers who have been assigned to distance learning. They were chumping at the bit as we have been working, leading up to the start of the school year, to meet their students. They are, the teachers were beyond excited to engage students, to meet them, to make them feel connected, to build a sense of community, and they have done just that in such a short amount of time. Our work started with a pretty extensive materials distribution process, and I call it a process because it was just that. We started with a list of materials that we wanted our students to have at home. These are the materials that they would be using in the classroom. We had plenty of those in the classroom, so our classroom teachers who were in buildings on those very first days of school gathered materials like whiteboards, workbooks for their Math &amp; Focus books, letter boards and tiles for phonics instruction, materials that students would need to engage in learning that supports our district curriculum. So they were a huge help, and then we had an assembly line, and it was exactly that, thanks to Fitzgeralds, who gave us about 400 brown paper bags that we were able to fill with all of these materials. We had a distribution center, and then on the Friday before school started, about 80% of our families drove through Tooten Hills, picked up a device and picked up a brown paper bag that was filled with all of those materials, including some math manipulatives that we prepared, so students would have that same experience as they were learning from home. So it was a team effort, and I want to thank all of those who assisted in that. It was a big undertaking, but it really helped us get the year off to a great start and really hit the ground running. Our first week focused on relationship building, making sure that we were building a sense of classroom community in this virtual environment, ensuring that our students had opportunities to learn and practice some of the technology skills that they would need. So our youngest students learned how to mute and unmute, how to join a class meeting, and they have done an awesome, awesome job. Our teachers, along with some support of our tech team, have been troubleshooting some of the technology glitches, and this week is a lot smoother. And our teachers have done a really, really nice job building a partnership with families, making those connections, providing support, and they have just, really just done an incredible amount of work to make this happen. And it's been so nice to hear from our teachers, who've gotten great accolades from families, and families who've reached out to me personally, just to thank the teams who have done so much to engage students and really make them part of a virtual learning community. Our specials kicked off this week, so we are part of the music rotation in the distance learning program. So students have two days a week of live music instruction, and then they have a few days a week where they have some asynchronous work that they can do from home. That was started this week, today, and it was a great new thing for students to look forward to. It's really important that in addition to the technology that students are using to access the curriculum, that they also have opportunities to use the paper and pencil types of materials that will help them with their learning. So our teachers put together supply lists, and just as students would gather supplies to bring to school, they did just that for distance learning as well. So students have their reader's notebook and their writer's notebook, and all the tools that they need to be organized and ready for their distance learning. And each week, our classroom teachers communicate, and often it's more than just once a week, about the weekly schedule. So parents feel connected, they know what's happening, they know what time students are logging in for instruction, and when they need to be ready and available for learning. You might recall that the distance learning model is set up so that students have opportunities on a daily basis for both whole-class instruction, where the teacher's delivering the lesson to all students, and opportunities for students to engage in smaller groups and to learn in that way as well. And our teachers have been really creative and really thinking about the needs of students, the purpose of the task that they're asking kids to do, and how they're setting up that learning opportunity for their students. So these are just a few highlights of week one. We have students saying hello and getting to meet one another. We have a time capsule project that's happening and thinking about what distance learning is all about. We have a kindergarten teacher who's reading a book to her students, and students at home made their own crowns to feel special. Sue is going to talk a little bit about our social-emotional learning, and our teachers did a lot of that in the first few, the first week of school to really tap into that, and so letting students to express themselves and get a sense of who they are. We have some class pets already. These are two pets of Mrs. Dares, our second, one of our second-grade teachers, and you can see the operation materials distribution in the bottom left of the screen, where we had quite the setup of getting over 300 cars to come through Tooten Hills on that Friday. So it was, it was a great success, and all of our students have exactly what they need for their learning right now.
So coming back to this social-emotional health and support, a huge piece of feedback that we've gotten from the teachers was around those additional professional development days that we had this year, right? We had that whole week prior to student arrival, and then with the early dismissal days, we also had the opportunity professional, to hold professional development sessions in the afternoon. And during that time, there were multiple sessions that were facilitated by teacher leaders across the district. So we had three different teams, an elementary social-emotional learning team, a middle school, and a high school. And certainly, there were social workers and school psychologists, but also classroom teachers, special education teachers, coming together and saying, what does this need to look like? What does this need to look like for adults? What does this need to look like for kids? So one of the first sessions was really focused on the faculty and staff, and and taking a temperature reading, not literally a temperature reading, but an emotional temperature reading of where people are at and what does that mean relative to self-care? Because it's a lot and it could be draining. So how do we as adults take care of ourselves so we can take care for kids? And then the second session was really focused on, what does that look like for students in this different world of new normals and teachers who are just introducing themselves to students for the first time? How do we make sure that we're emphasizing those connections for every single kid, whether that be distance learning or in-person learning? And what does that look like? So there were three specific practices that our teacher leaders really emphasized. One is every day, a warm welcome to that learning environment and giving teachers some ideas of what those warm welcomes could look like. The second is engaging strategies. So whether we are, you know, choosing a book for an out loud read or just talking about the day, what are those engaging strategies that teachers could utilize that work best for kids to get this at, this social emotional health? And the third is an optimistic ending. So as we're ending the class period for the day, how do we put really nice closure on our time together? And what we did is created a faculty and staff playbook that have numerous examples of how to do just this. So if you're not sure what it looks like, not only are we going to give you some specific professional development, we're also going to give you this playbook that really outlines what that might look like and that you can individualize for yourself as an educator. So that was huge. And I really want to thank the teacher leaders across elementary to high school. We had almost 30 teacher leaders really be working on this work over the summer and being thoughtful about this for their colleagues and students. We have some specific, we're calling it baseline information, that teachers are collecting from kids over the next week or so about where are you at? How are you feeling about being back at school? Who are your friends? Who's an adult that, if you were at, let's say, Latimer Lane School before, that you're really connected with? So if you're having difficulty, we can make sure that every student has a connection to an adult staff member. And that's huge. And it's not just about the classroom teachers, right? Sometimes it's about someone that they see every day in the cafeteria or one of the custodians or one of the front office secretaries. So that's really huge and we're collecting that information as well. And what I want to emphasize about the social and emotional health and support, this isn't just a one and done over PD week, you know, over the course of the last couple of days. This is a component that is so sentinel to our practices of reopening that we want to make sure that we're following up in faculty meetings and additional future professional development sessions. And hearing from teachers, how is it going? Where do you feel like we need to put more emphasis? And how can we help so we make sure that these connections are made and people continue to provide themselves that self-care, which results in great things for kids? Questions about that social emotional piece before I go into equity?
How do, how does the faculty and staff, I mean, do people feel comfortable coming back? I mean, what is the feedback you've gotten? I mean, we, we've seen feedback from, from parents and from the community. We don't see feedback from faculty and staff. So what, what kind of feedback have you gotten?
You know, Todd, honestly, I think it ranges. Were there faculty and staff who were, were some hesitations and worries coming back? Sure, absolutely. And, and that's why this focus on those components of self-care, on those components of the mitigation strategies and really talking about, hey, in this environment, these are the steps that we take to have some physical health and safety and also some social emotional health and safety. So I think honestly, people were all over the place with that. But we wanted to put these emphasis in the right areas so that staff could feel as comfortable and as safe as possible and able to do what they need to do for kids.
It's not so different than what we're doing with our kids so that they always have someone to talk to and someone to go to, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's kind of what we try to do for our students too, so I'm glad.
That's exactly it.
And Todd, you know, teachers also have that loop of union representation and we've defined consistent and constant dialogue with union presidents as well. When there are concerns and collaboratively, how we can approach them, whether they're instructionally, whether they have to do with safety. So I think we're kind of getting at that, you know, two different ways.
Absolutely. The other thing, Matt, and I participate in a weekly meeting with the Farmington Valley Health District and area superintendents so that if we have concerns or, you know, problems of practice, we can bring them to that table and get real feedback from our colleagues, but also from our partners at the Farmington Valley Health District, if it's more on the safety measures and that way.
Okay, all right, thanks.
The other thing I was going to say is, you know, it's like everything else. I mean, you know, as has been said, there was a lot of, you know, anxiousness coming into this.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, there was some concern about not hearing from the teachers and administrators. I mean, we were hearing a lot from the parents. But it would be also good to do a pulse check midway in, you know, because there was anxiousness coming in. And now that we're in, maybe a couple of weeks in, you know, it's always good to then see, now that we're in, do we feel better?
Absolutely.
You know, so to kind of put feelers out. And I know you're saying that you can get it from the union folks and all, but you all have your ways to get it from other folks too.
Right, yeah.
So it would be good to just hear.
And I think that's really important, Sharon. We were talking about that baseline information. That wasn't just for the students, right? That's also for staff.
Yeah.
So how do we, at upcoming opportunities, do those, as I call them, those temperature checks?
Yeah.
To continuously have these discussions? So again, it's not just, okay, you know, we checked that box. No, this is, this is an issue that we continuously have to come back to.
Yeah, because ultimately, we are trying to get back to full, right? And full means everybody.
Correct.
We can't get back to full unless, ooh, sorry, unless everybody feels that way, so.
I just wanted to touch base and see, the, the social emotional supports carries through to the distance learning teachers as well. I'm assuming that.
Absolutely.
It's part and parcel, everybody, we're all one group.
They've had specific professional development and what does that look like? And I think as things evolve, what kinds of challenges do you face when you're creating community over technology?
Right.
And there are some very specific resources that we are pulling on. I think I've shared with you, the collaboration of Social and Emotional Learning Castle is a wealth of information that we continuously utilize their resources to provide very specific development discussions, problem solving for all of those models, Susan.
That's great, thank you.
Great. Yes, Jen?
Two, one is probably an errant question, but I'll ask you. On the, the distance learning, their pacing versus hybrid and then once we go full-time, at least on the elementary level, do the, do distance learning teachers collaborate with in-school? Like, I would imagine the pacing is going to be different or odd or, or something we've never experienced before, that how do we keep those in line with each other?
So I think a big piece of that is kind of what I shared at the very beginning, that the units are the units. There's not different units for distance learning versus in-person, right? And it's that constant discussion around how those are going. What does the schedule look like? How does that play out? And I think that those practices will continue to evolve so we can make sure that those experiences are one that are deep and meaningful and rigorous and engaging, no matter if that's in-person or distance.
And on the social emotional piece, because, and correct me if I'm wrong, but Henry James and the high school do not have a homeroom or connections any longer. So who or how, I totally love that soft start at the elementary level and what they've done there, I think is amazing across the board. But at the high school level, and then, and maybe it's the different age group, I don't know, how, how are we connecting with kids to say, how are you doing and are you okay? And I don't, I didn't know where that's happening.
So I think that comes back to some of those, the three practices that I spoke about, those warm welcomes, those engaging strategies, and how are we ending class every day? And a lot of that is about those check-ins. And when we were in these professional development sessions, we actually gave opportunities for students and, or I'm sorry, for teachers in the same content to talk about what that would look like. So although there might not be those formalized structures of connections or of homeroom, those practices are expected. And when we're saying that that focus needs to be on those social emotional supports, that's really alive and well. You know, certainly, we still have some of the structures around whether they be our school counselors, whether they be our social workers and school psychologists. And they also know students that they certainly have to check in with and giving teachers the opportunity to share any concerns with those supportive educators who do that work in a, in a deeper way if that's needed. Okay. So equity, it's been really exciting. I believe I shared with the board that we had just had new teacher orientation, that we had a really interesting, great, exciting discussion around this equity statement and the expectations for equity here in the Simsbury Public Schools. Certainly, as an administrative council, we're going to be talking about what that statement launch is going to look like in a thoughtful and an intentional way in our upcoming faculty meetings in the next couple of months. You know, certainly, we're still continuing our equity council work. Our next meeting will be Thursday, September 17th. And we're at the point now where we're starting to look at the culture and climate data across the district. So certainly, I will be updating the board as those steps unfold. One of the other highlights that I wanted to share, certainly from my seat in pupil services, is our prioritized return of students with individualized education plans who are identified with need and having special education needs. So we've been very thoughtful about this. This is a prioritization that's also highlighted in our state plan to say that there are groups of students who we need to think differently about, that full in-person return. So students with very intensive specialized programming, some have already returned in that full, in-person learning. And we have other students who will be experiencing that full return on September 14th. On Monday, the 14th, all K-6 students that have individualized learning plans or IEPs, we, have been offered a full return to that. Actually, it's going to be four days a week. So that would be Tuesday through Friday. The reason being is their general education peers don't return until the 29th. So we wanted to provide time for those students to really be accessing some of that specialized programming that's outlined in their IEPs. And then for our middle school and high school students, there's going to be some additional communication coming to families this week about what that full in-person return is going to be looking like. And again, here with our students with special education needs, we're trying to do two things. Again, getting them back in-person to the greatest degree possible, but also really looking at building capacity and what that means. And we want to be very thoughtful and measured as we prioritize their in-person learning. I just wanted to share with the board some of the numbers relative to special education students in the distance learning option. So you'll see the breakdown there of K-6, of 7, 8, and of 9, 12. How this relates to percentages, that K-6, it's about 19% of our overall K-6 special education population. So that's very similar to our gen ed. Grades seven and eight, that's about 14% of our overall special education population in the middle school. And it's about 24%, that number of 47. So that's a tad bit higher for the high school percentage. But certainly, we, this does not mean that that distance learning option is anything less as far as IEPs. You may have heard me speaking about before when we were in the, the practice of school closure, we were implementing IEPs to the greatest extent possible. You probably heard me use, or remember me using that terminology. Now it's an expectation, our schools are open, that we are implementing IEPs. And if there are any adjustments that need to be made, that things look differently in a distance learning model, we actually have a newer structure called an individualized learning template that really articulates to families what specialized instruction looks like, whether that be in full in-person or in a distance learning model. So I can, you know, at an upcoming meeting, give board members an, an update about what that's looking like, but making sure that we ensure our specialized instruction for our students with IEPs. And then finally, I wanted to share with you some of our students, our Simsbury students that participate in open choice and their distance learning opt-in. Right now, about 42% of our students that participate in open choice have chose that distance learning opt-in. So we've already met with our choice liaison, Gertrude Banks, certainly, social workers as well at the elementary level to really ensure that connectivity and those connections, to make sure that we are checking in with every single student and family, to make sure that that is a reality. So wanted to share that with the board. And certainly, again, we can update you on any additional information as we continue to take these next steps.
Great, thank you very much, Sue. Any other questions for Sue?
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're onto Amy. And COVID expenditures.
So in your pocket is an updated breakdown of the COVID-related expenditures related to the reopening of school and all the great work that you heard about tonight. So you have your standard three columns that you've been presented with at each of the meetings. In your actual, as of June 30th, 2020, there's nothing that has changed here. So if you move on to the fiscal year '21 to date, you'll see that we're about $550,000 with current expenditures. So the last time we met, this dollar value has increased about $150,000. So we've had some additional Chromebook purchases, distance learning software, increases in expenditures related to the ventilation to get up to date with the state requirements, mainly related to technology purchases, the speaker phones, the adapters, the microphones, things of that nature. And then over in the fiscal year '21 estimated, we still have that $275,000 for an estimated five teachers that we would need for this year. Once I have finalized salaries on those teachers, we can move that over to the fiscal year '21 to date and kind of true up that number. If you take the fiscal year '21 to date and then you take the fiscal year '21 estimated compared to the last time I presented where we increased about $35,000 from the same period. I'm expecting to see probably one more increase with some larger expenditures that will be presented at the next meeting as we start to settle into the school year and kind of get some of those technologies up and running. We had some technology that came a little bit late. Everybody kind of trying to find their technology needs for the schools at the same time. And then after that, I really expect things that should start to settle down. We'll probably have to maintain some PPE, cleaning supplies, things of that nature. But like I mentioned at the last meeting, we did buy in bulk, so we'll have to see how that goes. I'm not really sure what the replenishment schedule on that is going to look like yet. A small piece of good news, the additional bandwidth that Sue mentioned earlier. On the last presentation, you would have noticed that there was about a $20,000 cost related to the additional bandwidth. But the state of Connecticut has done a bandwidth bonus program which has provided us with a free upgrade. So that is $20,000 that we did not have to spend. If you've been watching the news, you would have seen that the CARES funding is going through a second round and schools will be receiving some additional funding coming up. If you notice, our original estimate was for about $462,000. And then unfortunately, we were notified later on that the state made an error in their allocation calculation and our allocation was reduced to about $292,000. So between the first round of funding, the second round of funding, some estimated fiscal year '20 savings, we will have to have funding of about $120,000 in excess of our budget. Currently, we have $385,000 in our non-lapsing. Reduce that by the $120,000 that we need, it leaves a balance in our non-lapsing of about $260,000. Any questions?
Does the, does the personnel line include the new custodial staff?
No. No. Those are just the teachers. There is overtime related to the custodial staff under staff time. It's about a little bit less than halfway down. You'll see staff time for cleaning and reopening prep.
So Todd, we're in process, too, and we usually do it around 10:01 out of Neil's office with Cindy, and what we say is kind of trueing up that FTE number overall, because there's been some movement in non-certified as well. Neil mentioned the additional first-grade teacher that we're going to hire, so we're going to be coming back with a much more detailed report on this. But wanted to paint the picture, at this point, with non-lapsing in the expenditures and the funding from the state, we're relatively speaking in good shape at this point in time. But that word fluid, this is a fluid situation, and how we need to respond to these needs that move forward. So there will be some additional costs on the personnel side that we'll see in the upcoming weeks.
So, maybe I'm just not connecting the dots here. So what personnel is specifically associated with COVID, and what personnel is just, you were talking about?
Any new hires after that initial hiring season? You know, after what we budgeted, we're going to say are COVID-related expenditures, because they have to do with the fluidity of back and forth of enrollment, trying to balance these two different models. Certainly, the custodial is enhancement due to cleaning requirements, that'll be attributable to COVID. So we kind of assess that on a, kind of a one-off basis, depending on what we need.
So in that 275.
I will, can I add one more thing? You know, the state talked about reimbursing dollars as part of the CARES Act for personnel as well, but they will only make districts eligible that have free and reduced lunch above 40%. So I know that got quite a bit of feedback from superintendents in our meeting with the commissioner, understanding the needs of those districts, but recognizing that every district that is responding to this situation has similar personnel needs, right? Because you're essentially running multiple avenues of a school system that you weren't before, and you're doing it from one pool of resources. So I don't know if that will change over time, if there'll be further conversation, but the State Department's received quite a bit of input there.
So the personnel line for teachers, where it's 275, is that our COVID expenses in teachers, or is that something else?
Yeah, so those are the positions that are above and beyond the approved budget.
That's five FTE at this point.
Okay. That's, I think, what I was trying to understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are additions to what we budgeted for and were approved for.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you, Amy. All right, so we are at public audience again. Would anyone like to speak to us? Yes, please. Just your name, your address, in three minutes, please.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth. Down? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Peterson, 32 Foxdun Road. I just wanted to, I think, add some information, a question that came up with a member of the board regarding bikes. I can speak specifically for Simsbury High School, but the present bike rack is very small. I noticed that about a month ago. I contacted Mr. Para in early August, anticipating the issue, had a great conversation with him. He acknowledged, and said he would look into it. Fast forward to a month later, my son calls me and says he can't fit his bike on the rack. I can't make this up. Hey, I predicted it. So anyway, I contacted Mr. Para's assistant, she looked immediately into it, got right back to me and said that they are going to look into getting more bike racks, but just, I thought I'd add the information that she said, in the meantime, any student can attach their bike to any available object, pole, or bring it to the main office. So I thought I'd let you know that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no other public audience, our next meeting will be September 22nd, tentatively for the Board of Ed Conference Room, so watch our agendas, and we'll let everybody know if it's going to be in a different location. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to our new students. Hopefully, we'll get to hear more from you on the next go-around. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.